Welcome. This is the committee meeting for the Board of Education. It is Wednesday, May 4th. It is 6:04. I apologize for being late. And I will start off by doing roll call. Ms. Darling?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond is unable to be here tonight. Ms. Lambier?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Ziem?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
And Ms. Bishop is here as well. All right. So do you want to give us updates or do we just want to start in with the questions? Mr. Donovan?
So why don't I just give a quick sort of summary of where we are? So basically, we've prepared what we're going to call the superintendent's budget. That's what we've shared with you. We've answered, I think, most all the questions. So to let you know as far as the numbers, where we are, the budget that was proposed by the superintendent, that's sort of the budget on the table at this point, is $121,864,004. That is an increase over last year of $5,422,298, which percentage-wise is 4.66%. Now, that number is higher than typical as far as a percent. But the mayor's recommendation, which was in your budget book, said that he would propose an increase of 3% over last year, plus assuming the teacher's contract was approved and they would get the savings from the medical, another $2.3 million. So those, based on that message from the mayor, the total of those two are $5.793 million. So basically, we're underneath what the mayor put in his recommendation.
That does work.
So that's a good thing. The mayor is, before I end it, the rest of the process is after this board approves the budget, well, not after, but this board still needs to approve the budget, next Tuesday, the city, the mayor is presenting the budget to the Board of Alderman. So they'll get their so-called budget book next Tuesday, May 10th. To put that budget book together, it obviously takes some time. So the numbers in that budget right now are this $121 million. That's what's in. So if there's any changes, it won't change in the original budget book, but it can be changed as we move ahead. So that's going to happen on May 10th. Then there's a series of meetings over the next few weeks. Each of the departments will then go to the Board of Alderman and they'll discuss their budget, give a PowerPoint, answer questions, et cetera. Education is the last one on that list, so we'll be doing that June 20th. Typically, it's myself, the superintendent, and the board president that would sit at the horseshoe. Everyone's free to come, but you don't have to, or it's up to you. So then, June 20th relatively late, so that we're the last presentation. Then they'll have about, you know, eight or nine working days until July 1st to approve it. So everything's pushed back a bit. The one other thing that came up recently was that even though we were 370,000 below his initial, the mayor's initial recommendation, what I've been told we'll probably see in the budget book is a recommendation to reduce our budget by 100,000 from the mayor. Okay? So that's simply a recommendation by the mayor. The Board of Alderman will vote on the budget. So they're the ones that have the final decision on whether that 100,000 will be in there or not be in there. That will probably be a question on June 20th. So as far as you're concerned tonight, don't feel like you have to cut 100,000. The only way you would have to cut 100,000 is if the Board of Alderman agree with the mayor. You won't know that until June 20th, and then we'd have to come up with a way to cut 100,000, which I'm sure I could come up with at that point in time, if it seemed to be headed in that direction.
So to clarify, we were 370,000 under the recommended budget, and now it needs to be another $100,000 under the recommended budget?
It doesn't need to be.
Doesn't need, that's the...
What's probably going to be presented to the Alderman as, because the Alderman will get a book and it'll say, here's what we put in, and then a recommendation by the mayor. So the mayor can add or decrease to any of the different departments.
Okay.
But from what I've been told, he's going to suggest a decrease in the education budget of 100,000, not $100.
You're in a different stratosphere with where the commas go than us.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, that's a bummer, but I think that you guys did a great job. Do we have questions about the budget? Questions? No, I know, Ms. Johnson. Just joking. Go ahead.
First of all, I want to say thank you to Dr. McKinney and Mr. Donovan for answering my questions yesterday. I know that I keep getting yelled at, I guess, because I don't go directly to Dr. McKinney, but I just put everybody on there, make it easier the first shot, and you could distribute how you'd like to. First of all, I'd like to ask, before I get into my questions and my concerns here, could you just explain this handout that I've asked for? Because I'm going through this and I'm seeing low numbers and average, I guess, class sizes.
Do you want to just clarify what your original question was that prompted this information?
Well, my original question was, before we took our two-week break here, I asked that I get every school, every classroom, every grade, exactly how many students are in each class? Because I know the enrollment has been coming down, and I just want to see how the class sizes were going. Averaging is great, but you just can't see exactly how many are in a classroom. So I appreciate this. I know it's a little bit last minute, but I guess everybody else was on vacation, so was my brain the last two weeks. But I do appreciate all the hard work. So if you can kind of explain this to everybody, I would appreciate it.
Okay. So first of all, the information that you see here comes out of X2, the Student Information System. And we do have a new data analyst. Would that be his title? Yes?
Instructional data analyst, yes.
Okay. So Jonathan is very good at pulling data and creating things, but he's relatively new, and he's got, when you're a data analyst, you have to understand the data you're pulling, where it's coming from, et cetera. So it's always, not always that simple. But we were able to, what you have here is, these are all the elementary schools. And for example, if you look at the first page, you'll see grade one. So the first three lines are the three first grades at Amherst Elementary. You can see the number of students for each of those classes, 13, 14, and 14. Then you go to the next line, there's two second-grade classes. They have 15 and 17. So that's what this report does. It goes through each of the elementary classrooms and shows you how many students are in each. Now, you will see, for example, towards the bottom of the Amherst Street listing, there's some small numbers there. And it says "check grade." So I don't know exactly what that is at this point, but, Miss Dr. McKinney, can maybe help us out with that?
So check grade would refer to classes of either special education or ELL students. So most likely, those at Amherst Street are special education students that may be in that classroom all day, parts of the day, chunks of time at a time, and then going to their regular ed classroom.
So you'll see that it's not at every school. It's at certain schools, and it tends to be at the schools where we have special education programs. So that's why you'll see it at Main Dunstable. I know we have special education programs there, very specific to those students. Certain schools, let's say Ledg Street, for example, they don't have any of those programs, so there's no check grade or very small numbers there. So that's what that information is. Like in New Surles, there's a number of them, and I know we have a few programs there. And then on the last page of the handout tonight, that's a summary of the number of teachers at each one of the schools.
Dr. McKinney?
Yes, and just one other thing. So two board members asked for a breakdown of the number of students in each class and each school at the elementary level. So this is in response to that request. The outstanding request is, and I detailed this in the email, is the secondary level. Elementary is elementary. You have one teacher, a group of kids. They're pretty much all day long. It gets increasingly challenging at the secondary level with multiple students taking multiple courses with multiple teachers and trying to break them down and tease them out. So we had some drafts today. Dan and I reviewed them, met with Jonathan. We're trying to further analyze that with building leaders and then put it together before next Wednesday and get it to you. So it's a larger task. It takes a little bit more time, but we have identified courses that we usually don't run without 14 students in it, but there are courses where they have combined sections where an ELL teacher could be meeting with groups of kids that are in a class of 14, but they're on different levels. So it's almost like classes within a class. So that's the kind of level of scrutiny that we're going through. So I hope to have that for next week.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I'm looking on the page with Fairgrounds and Ledg Street, and it says grade four. You go right across, and there's only one student. And it's in the fourth column. It says column four, grade four, right below 19.
Like a third of the, well, two-thirds of the way down the page.
Yeah. Sounds good.
I'm not sure why she's saying...
In the Ledg Street section?
Yes, there's, I can promise you, there's no class at Ledg Street with one student.
Okay. So this is just a number that got put somewhere.
Well, like I said, it's coming out of the ASPN, the student system. And it's being pulled out by someone that's very new to the district, so there could be some things like that that just...
And there's just a, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
There's not an easy button. What comes out of ASPN doesn't look like this.
Oh, yeah.
So it's not as easy as running a report. There are a couple of steps involved. So let me look into this piece, and we'll get back to you.
Okay. Also, let's see.
Do you mind if Ms., it looks like Ms. Ziem had a follow-up question.
Sure.
I was just going to say that in years past, there seemed to be some students who were traveling, like, for instance, they may only take music and art or gym kind of stuff in the integrated classroom, and then they went and did their own kind of thing. They used to divide it on the papers. I think Mr. Donovan will remember. I don't know if that, I think it was during your time. And I'm wondering, when you, these figures that we're looking at, are they inclusive of those traveling students? Or do you hear what I'm saying?
Like the homeschool students that would come in to do the...
Some of the kids come in just for art. For instance, it's special education. Let's say they have an intensive special needs, and they don't want to stay in the classroom all day, but they can come for art, they can come for music, I think, gym. There are miscellaneous classes that they, it makes it nice for them because it gives them a little flavor of the social life, but it keeps them where they can learn more, hopefully. And so, but I don't see it included here, and I'm wondering if it's included. For instance, when they say 17 students, is that 17 including some traveling students who just come for those special classes? Or is it inclusive of the total number who sit there, morning to leaving?
Dr. McKinney?
Yes, this is inclusive of all elementary students and teachers. If you look at the first page where we spoke about check grade and how those are smaller numbers there, those are likely students in a special education setting. They may either join their homeroom and go to art, music, P.E., and library, or at times, depending on schedule and capacity, they may join a smaller group of students to go to art, music, P.E., library, music, and those other things.
So can I just, I want to be sure I'm understanding, and sometimes my brain, I'm a little fuzzy these days. I had a concussion this week. So for instance, when it's saying Charlotte Avenue, 12 kids in a classroom, some of those kids, if I'm understanding you, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm just trying to make sure I understand, some of those kids may be traveling. They may not be there the whole day, because that 12 is inclusive of the travelers as well? Is that what you were saying?
I'm not familiar with the term travelers, but those 12 kids are assigned to a first-grade homeroom, so they would most likely be in the same classroom most of the day. There could be kids that are joining them from other classrooms, or ELL, or special education classrooms, but it's more likely than not that those 12 students are there with the teacher for the day.
For the whole day? Okay. So it's, so there are probably no travelers?
You're making me concerned that there are children traveling across the district. I was unaware of.
And that's not my intent, and I'm sure...
They travel within the building, but I certainly hope they're not going metro across the city.
No, no. And actually, I think it worked fairly effectively, so I'm not trying to create a problem or there isn't one. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Brown, I...
I'll wait.
Is it okay? Okay.
Thank you. It's just basically the same thing. On page three, where it says Broad Street Elementary, grade three, it says six students, and the line below that, it says four students, I guess. So I'm just questioning that, because it doesn't show check grade, so I eliminated the check grades.
Then the pre-K you're looking at?
I'm looking Broad Street. It is third grade.
I'm looking at Birch Hill. I apologize.
And second grade.
Oh, right there, second grade. Yep.
So I could just share one thing. What you don't see on here is, what we use in ASPN is either sections or courses to assign students to develop their schedule, their master schedule, and their report cards and progress reports. So it's likely these students are assigned to a course or a section, but not included in a homeroom, which I think would roll up into a larger number. So we'll go back and check that.
Okay. Because I guess Ms. Ziem was talking about moving around, and in elementary school, they don't move around, so they would be assigned to a first-grade teacher. Am I correct? Because I'm getting a little bit confused now, because if they're homeroom teacher, that means basically that's where they're going to be staying most, unless they get taken out for like speech and language or something like that, or OT, PT for special ed, but they're in a regular classroom. Am I missing something here?
Well, Broad Street has certain programs where kids, let's say emotionally handicapped or whatever the term is, that they, so they have a special program. So those kids are assigned to that program. So there may be six students in third grade that are in that special program. They would not be included with the third grade that is there, which shows, you know, one class of 17 and one class of 13.
Okay. So I...
So certain schools have a special program where the kid spends most of their time in the special program, but they do, as Mrs. Ziem was about traveling, they will spend maybe a math class or reading or something in, they'll leave that, the special class and move into the regular third-grade class.
Okay. So on this sheet, it does not let us know how many kids, like the six, that might be in a special ed section and goes to maybe music or math or something else, and then most of the days it's with, might be in special ed. And then moves over, like Ms. Ziem said, travels in the building. Because as we look at this, we just see the grades, and we don't see anything else. So when I see six students in third grade, I've got to wonder why there's such a small amount of students in the classroom. And I get it with the special ed, that they could be in a special ed classroom, but it doesn't tell us that. And you know, and here, we're looking at the budget, and we're trying to figure out how many students are in each class, making sure that the class size is, you know, pretty well-balanced, not over like 23, 25 kids. And so it kind of throws you off a little bit, although there was one classroom here, kindergarten in Broad Street with 21 kids. And 22. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Brown, you go ahead.
So I want to take a look a little closer at some of the elementary numbers over kindergarten, because kindergarten, I understand, they have, you know, the student-teacher ratio should be as low as possible. We've got some, several here. Charlotte Ave, I'm seeing several, as well as Mount Pleasant. And if we, for example, it looks like we have four second-grade classes at Charlotte Ave. One with, let's see, 12 students, two with 12 students, and two with 10 students for a total of 44 students. And that's, those are very low teacher-student ratios. Even if we were to divide those classes for next year into three teachers as opposed to four, that still keeps your student average in those, at that school, in that, just that, that school, at 14 students, which is pretty, still a very small, manageable class size, even at the elementary level. You'll see that again. Actually, that's in both second grade and fourth grade at Charlotte Ave. They've got, their fourth grade has 11 students in one class, 13, 13, 13. Again, if you add those up, it's 50, divided by three, it's about 16 kids per class, which again, for a fourth-grade class, is still a pretty low class size. 11 seems like we're starting to skirt on the edge of having one of those really difficult conversations that nobody really wants to have. I'm looking also down here a little further at the Mount Pleasant numbers, which are in some ways a little bit more nerve-wracking, when we are seeing the, we've seen, you know, even before COVID, we're looking at 100 student decline through, annually through the years. For example, let's see here, we've got, at Mount Pleasant, we've got in the fourth grade, I'm sorry, I've got my calculator out here. We've got four to, fourth-grade classes, 11 students, 13 students, and 14 students. And I know that's great, but even if we were to combine those at 38 students down to two classrooms, that's still even a maximum of 19 students per class. I want to know about how you're thinking about moving the district forward as far as redistricting, and when we're talking about teacher assignments district-wide. I mean, typically, we would not want to be running a classroom with 10 or 11 students in it. That's not typical of an upper elementary classroom, so.
Dr. McKinney? About that?
I think there are a couple of things to keep in mind. First of all, the K1 students haven't been in school for a full year in two years, so their experience is very different. And the kids coming in don't know how to do school, if you will. Second, if you stay with the Charlotte Ave example, and you just do your numbers, you have to include the 30 kids that are in those special education classrooms that are most likely coming to the regular ed classrooms for chunks of the day. And throughout this year, they came without a para, because we're short 100 para educators. So teacher instruction, the teacher direction is key. Obviously, we're looking at, you know, kind of a raw report that we've already identified that has some errors. If you wanted to direct administration to come back with a recommendation for looking at teacher-to-student ratios and possible reductions, we could do that. But I think it's also an opportunity to stay the course for another year, see how many kids come back. We still have ESTER funding, and get fully staffed and be able to move kids forward. The biggest challenge we have going right now is obviously we're focused on hiring. It's going to come up later, but our analytics from our website show we've had more people go to our website after the job fair than in the last year, by a considerable margin. So we're attracting people, we're marketing, we're advertising, we've got to fill seats. I understand there's a monetary cost to that, but we can't service our kids if we're not short-staffed. And when people came this year, they obviously spoke about they're doing double duty throughout the year. I know, I understand the tough conversation that needs to be had. All attendance or enrollment is a snapshot in time. There are a lot of kids that are transient. Kindergarten's hard to predict because we're waiting on registration. But I certainly think if you were going to get to a phase where you wanted more information to make a recommendation or provide you with one, we'd like to be able to contact the building principals and hear from them as well, because these are, you know, numbers on a page. There's a story. Each kid is not always sitting in their seat and listening to the teacher. There's always more to the story. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
I can have one follow-up to that.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Ms. Johnson.
Bye, Ms. Johnson. Thank you. So these classes at the upper elementary, that's actually more what I'm interested in focusing on, is, you know, third, fourth, even second grade at that point. I think, my opinion is that 14 is a reasonable class size. I think it's actually a very good class size. Are there any of these classrooms with, when they've got 11, 13, 13, 13, are those positions that are, that you're saying are currently unfilled? I'm looking, well, the one I'm looking at right now is the fourth grade at Charlotte Ave, but there's a couple of others, grades in other schools. And I'm not, don't mean to, by the way, Charlotte Ave, I don't mean to pick on you, it just happens to be, you're alphabetically towards the top. So, because it's also, is Mount Pleasant, we've got several situations like that in the fourth grade, fifth grade. You can look further down into Sunset Heights, has several classrooms with only 13 students at the upper to mid-level, mid and upper level elementary. What would be, can I ask you for two questions? One, in your professional opinion, for upper elementary, what is, do you consider a good class size to be both academically successful and also make sure you're getting all the social needs and fiduciary, meeting our fiduciary responsibilities? I know that's a big question. And also, my first question really is, how, are there any of these positions that are currently unfilled with these low classroom sizes?
So I didn't bring the report around HR vacancies and how many are unfilled. We certainly could do an analysis based on the teacher's contract, which outlines the limits for class sizes, and we could do a report that would show you how many are at or above or below that contractual average, because it's pretty much the ceiling for class enrollment, both K-2 and 3 to 5. So those are, would be the numbers that we would go by. When we rolled out full-day kindergarten, we tried to keep it at like 20, and then the upper grades would be a little north of that. When I taught fourth grade, 24 was like a sweet number. But when I went to Texas, somehow over 30 was the standard. So it's very different where you are. So that's something we could look at in terms of comparing the contractual limits for class sizes to what's here right now.
And that was always my understanding, that I would agree, 20 to 24 is kind of a really nice class size for an elementary school class, just both socially and academically, I think.
And just to add, the challenge that I, when I meet with teachers, and I had lunches this year, third and fourth graders are not like the third and fourth graders I had.
No, their third and fourth graders have been out of school for two years.
They're very young.
Yeah.
Socialization problems, problem-solving, conflict resolution, taking turns, using a pencil again, cutting, gluing, all those skills are kind of, have to come back. And for our younger students, that's going to be considerable amount of time. So just to point that out, because some of the stories I heard from fifth-grade teachers in how third graders enjoy playtime, it's very developmentally different than I would expect a fifth grader, because they just haven't had that time together. It's very different. Thank you.
Mr. Claffey?
I'm just curious to, thank you. How is this discussion and these questions, this information, how is that going to be relevant to how we vote later tonight?
So...
Is someone going to propose cuts?
People can propose accepting the budget with amendments.
So is that part of the...
That's what they're teasing out.
And at what point will these amendments be offered?
When they make the motion.
Can I? Are you saying, would I like to?
No, no, no. If they're finding something that they want to change in like each budget line, they can say, I propose to accept the budget with the amendment to, you know, we want the unicorn fund to be $3 million more. So they can say whatever they want when it comes time to making the motion.
But yeah, I'd just like to see how this, this data justifies some kind of changes, rather than just asking questions and looking at the numbers, which we've had all day.
Yeah. Ms. Johnson?
Well, you know, I've gone through the budget. I've looked through the...
Well, you know, I've gone through the budget, I've looked through the budget, and I'm trying to justify all these numbers. Do we need all these classroom teachers? Can we combine classrooms at this point in time where the enrollment might be lower? And so, I mean, I'm glad what we have is a budget here, but I think it's going to choke the citizens of this city also, because this is only one stage of the budget. When you get, when this now goes to the Board of Alderman and they have all the other departments, this is really the largest budget of the whole city.
Mm-hmm.
It's the school district. This encompasses the whole thing. And when you take a look at the budget and you see what's left in the classrooms and for the needs of the students in the classroom, this whole budget, about 80% of it is salary and benefits. I mean, it was a 5% increase this year for the teacher's contract. That's a lot of money. The budget went up about 4.9%. So it's, it's crazy. Maybe I'm wrong on the percentage, oh, excuse me. The overall budget went up 4.66%, and the increase was 5.4 million. Okay, that's 121,864,804 that the budget went up. That's a lot of money going up. Okay?
I just ask, but we knew this, was it two months ago when you, Mr. Donovan presented the initial budget? So I guess I was, why didn't we have this conversation two months ago?
Because, because he gave it to us, and now this is the wrap-up. We've got all the information now, and now we're sorting through it and asking the questions and seeing, are we going to support it? I'm not going to support the budget the way it is right now. I have a lot more questions and I've got a lot more information. I handed out a sheet of paper to everybody, because I think there's a real issue here with one job description. And I'm just waiting for us to finish this up. But I just want to talk about, when we were saying about our students now, they're behind in a lot of ways. You know, I guess, I was the one who kept screaming about what's happening with our students, because here's a piece of paper that talks about the CDC. CDC predicted this, March 14th and before, about the updated checklist moves milestones back so that 75% of our children should reach at a given age. I mean, it, the masks had a problem with kids' learning, kids being out of school, with all that remote learning. And we just kept pushing it back and pushing back, kids can't come back, kids. And these students were the least affected, and the CDC even said that, kids were not super-spreaders of COVID. But yet, we masked them up and we kept them out of school, and we're trying to catch them up, and we're trying to do what's right here in the school to see, do we need to have all these classrooms or we're going to have a good average size in the grades?
So even if the mayor gives us what he believes is a good increase or a good budget for us, there's still people who believe that the educational budget for the city is too big anyway. So even if the mayor says, this is what I will approve or what I think we can do, there's still people who believe that that's too much. So they're, I mean, Paula's one of them. So she believes that, you know, even if they're saying this is okay, she's still saying it can be less. So she's just kind of doing what she does and following through on what?
Just one, so at what point do these amendments get offered? That's all, tonight?
As soon as, when we get finished with this, I'm going to think about this, and I'm going to go on to my, my next several issues here that I have, that I've written down. So we're just going through. I mean, we could stay here till midnight, I don't care. I've kept the budget open till midnight before. I've held it up for months at the city level, three months after it was supposed to be approved. So, thank you.
Ms. Gillio?
Hi. I just wanted to kind of echo something that Dr. McKinney said, and also talk about the situation with our students this current year. If ever there were a year that we should have small class sizes, this past year has been that year. We were lacking 100, over 100 PARs, so the teachers were not getting the support in the classrooms that they're used to getting. We have students who are way behind, both emotionally, educationally. I, I for one, think that this information is valuable. I would like to see it a year from now and then really dig into it. I think that, that we need another year. This past year has not been a normal year. And I think we're going to see more students coming back to the school in the current year, the coming up, upcoming year. And I just think that this would be the wrong time to try to make class sizes bigger. I just think right now, with the staffing shortage that we have, we need to keep things the way they are. So I would support this part of the budget.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes, so when putting the budget together, do I think Nashua can afford to have classrooms in the third and fourth grade of 11 and 12 kids? We're not Phillips Exeter Academy. We can't afford that, long run. That being said, I thought of that, as Mrs. Gillio just said and a couple other people, we were, this was not an easy year. There were a bunch of positions open, so people were shuffling around, doing lots of work. When I sat down to do this budget, I, I said, one more year of having these smaller class sizes will hopefully bring the students a lot closer to where they need to be. I would certainly suggest that when we put this together next year, if we're seeing class sizes of 11 kids, yeah, get rid of one of those teachers, maybe move them to another school, maybe, you know, if teachers retire, you do it through attrition, whatever. But yeah, you can't, you can't continue to have the number of students go down and the teachers stay the same. At some point, it has to, it has to change.
Right.
But we, when we talked about it as a group, we said, this is probably not the year we want to do that.
Right.
We want to get one more year under our belt and then look at it next year. So that's, that's what we looked at. And, you know, I'm not a big fan of 4% increases in property tax, which it might be this year. I think that's nutty. But on the other hand, I, you know, for the sake of the kids, let's talk about the kids for once. For the sake of the kids, I think if we have another year of the class sizes, because when you looked at this, the one we had sent out earlier, and I commented on it and said, you have a lot of, you know, 13, 14, 12 kids in a class, those are small numbers. Those are, those are private school numbers, people paying 50,000 a year to go to those schools.
Exactly.
You know, so we can't afford that long-term, but we do have ESSER funds to keep some other things going. You know, I, I suggest, my suggestion is that we not make too much way of a change, reducing teachers this coming year.
I have, I have a question. So if we, if we're down staff, how, and I know we've had these numbers and I know they're in here, but I'm just talking theoretically. If we're down teachers, but we are able to combine and make smaller classrooms, so let's say there's a, there's a four-class third grade school, and each of the classes have 10 students, and we have one, you know, one person who is not teaching right now. So we have three full-time teachers, four classes, and we're trying to find a fourth teacher. At what point do you look at that school and say, we don't need that fourth classroom, we can combine these four classes into a more appropriately numbered classroom, and then not have to worry about that missing staff person? So we're not going into school going, oh, we're 10 people short, when we're actually appropriate teacher-to-student ratio, just not combined properly?
Yes, the, for the, for example, the other day, someone came to me and said, we need another kindergarten teacher, because the numbers that, I think it was bicentennial, are off the chart. So we need another. And I said, fine, there's one in this budget. Take, take Charlotte Ave, for example. If there's four classes of 10 each, you take one of those teachers and you shuffle around. So that type of thing, where you're going to see a few spikes in a few areas that are really low, we do have the capability during the summer when you have tighter numbers of moving some people around. It's not going to be the senior teachers, it's going to be the newer teachers that we would do that to.
And do we have to keep the teachers within the same school that they're originally in? So it would be like if, if we have an, an extra Charlotte Ave teacher, we can put a fourth grade teacher into a second grade? I know that's in the contract somewhere, and Dr. McKinney's dying to answer me.
I hope we're not dying.
It's like the Truman Show sometimes in here.
Jimmy, Jimmy liked that one.
Yeah.
It's certainly a lot easier in this setting to look at numbers on a page and try to make them work. The other half of the equation is sitting with the collective bargaining units.
Right.
And coming to a mutually agreed upon solution. There is language in the contract around doing those sort of things. And being the assistant superintendent, it's not unusual for principals to come and say, can we add a classroom? And then Dan and I, at that time, would fight it out and see if those things could happen. When there's an open position, you have more flexibility to move it around and move it to a classroom. But combining gra, kids from different grades certainly would be something we would talk to the union about. So the flexibility in this setting doesn't always translate to the final solution that might be presented.
Oh, yeah. And, and one student doesn't always equal one student.
I'm not sure what he means by combining kids, though, from different grades. Can you?
I think he means classes.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Hypothetically, if I was a veteran teacher with continuing contract status, and I was at a, a point in my career when I would not want to teach 10 third graders and 10 fourth graders in a classroom, I could bring that to my union representative and have a conversation around, around changes in working conditions, around agreements in the contract. And that would be something I would have a conversation with the union president around. Is that helpful?
Yes, yes. I actually just didn't understand what you were saying, but I understand now. I got it.
Ms. Seem?
Well, I, I just wanted to say that when I looked at the numbers initially, like some of the others, I thought maybe we can combine some of these classes. But I have to say that always it's been my thought that our kids lost one or two years, full years, I believe they lost through this pandemic. And, and in my view, the ideal thing would be if we could just go back and put everybody back. But politically speaking, that's never going to happen. So under those circumstances and having heard what Dr. McKinney and Mr. Donovan said, I have to say that I agree with Mrs., I want to mispronounce your name, Mrs. Gillio. Anyway, I've only, you've only been on this board with me for two years now. I'll get it before I die.
It's not tricky.
I'm sorry. But I agree with you that probably, because the kids will be at such varying levels, that it's going to require more individual attention from the teacher. And she can only break it up and do that individual thing in a small setting. There's just no way when you have huge class. So I guess I would agree with you, Sharon. That was good, good thinking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I know, I know you want to speak. I want to say that I agree with you guys, and I think we're kind of looking a gift horse in the mouth. We have an opportunity to do more individualized care with students with the smaller classrooms. So I think attacking them this year isn't, isn't the best, especially with kind of the social emotional needs that are going on with the students. So I think the smaller classrooms are fantastic. I think if this was, you know, 2019 and we had numbers like this, I think it would be realistic to sit around and say, what's going on? But I agree with all you guys about.
And can I just add that I do think this conversation is valuable, though, going to Mr. Claffey's point, because our parents are listening to this, our community hopefully is listening to this. And hopefully, the message they're getting is that this board cares about their kids, that we're committed to doing the very best we can with, with what we have, because you can't get blood out of a turnip, as they say.
Right.
So I think that, that it shows, it makes, in my view, it's good for the parents. And it's good for them to know that after tonight, if they have things that they want to add to this dialogue, they have the opportunity. And I, I think that when we, when we are a team, two is always better than one, three is better than two. So I think that the more we can work as a team, the better it is for our students, better it is for our administrator, for our community, for our state, and for our nation. Thank you.
And I think, and just to add on to that, I know Dr. McKinney's trying to talk, but I'm going to keep talking over him. Having worked for the state before, where we have a budget crisis, and then we go into a statewide hiring freeze, sure, we save money in the very short term, but the cost of what happens to the children that are now underserved exponentially increases years after. I mean, I think you can go back and look at the numbers for child protection and see when we were low numbers for staff, within two years, we had more child fatalities, we had more behavioral outbursts, we had more kids in juvenile, juvenile justice. So I think anytime we can fully support our students is, I've seen it firsthand. I mean, that, that's what's best for our entire state financially, because it ends up costing us less in the long run, getting ahead of that. But, okay, Dr. McKinney. Thank you.
I would just say two things. One, I, I understand where you're coming from, but the flexibility we have by keeping an FTE, just say, one position, over the years, is that we have looked at classes come the fall and used that position and took a classroom position, but made it a special education position. And if, thinking that way over the next two years is going to be critical in that when the ESSER funding stops.
Right.
And you have this DOJ agreement, you're going to have to find ways to add ELL teachers into the mix while keeping the budget at a place that's manageable for the community. So, you know, I think the next two years are certainly going to be challenging, but I think, I don't think I've, I've at least done that two or three times over the last couple of years, and Ms. Bagley's been thankful. I don't think I've reduced one classroom teacher over the years, but Dan's always, always excited when that opportunity happens, because then you have the opportunity to reallocate those funds for deferred maintenance or any of the other things that we have. So, I'll leave it at that.
Right. And we may find ourselves needing more guidance counselors and social workers and psychiatrists. And I mean, just because we don't need an actual teacher, doesn't mean we don't need that employee spot. Ms. Lamphier?
I just wanted to mention that the fact is that these numbers are taken at the end of the school year. I bet if we had done this in September, the numbers would have been a lot different. So it's not that the administration is being careless or not thoughtful about how they allocate the kids to the teachers. It's just, you know, the time of year and school choice and the pandemic and everything. So the numbers probably changed quite a bit over the year. Thank you.
Ms. Seem? Oh, sorry, Mr. Claffey. Sorry, it's like ping tennis up here.
One other reason why, and I'm sure you've all thought this, it just hasn't been aired yet, we should keep sizes reasonably small, is we don't know where this, the next variant's going to come and how bad it's going to be. So I just think that's another good reason to wait and see. I mean, there's still high school classes of 30.
Mm-hmm.
But we've seen the Omicron. I mean, it's not, it's not as deadly, but we just, we don't, we don't know what the future holds. And if we want to keep the schools open, putting masks, the mask debate aside, I think keeping class, it's, it's a no-brainer for another year.
Yeah. Ms. Seem?
I would, I would request that, that at our next meeting, if possible, I have said before that the Department of Justice review that Dr. McKinney was talking about, I would love to have, I don't think we've had a real overview of that. And as a board, I think it's something that, especially we're going to lose our esteemed Dr. McKinney. So before he leaves, we want to tap into that brain, get as much as we can get. And the other thing is, I would, I also think it would be helpful if we knew how many teachers where we are with this job hunt, job search. And it's delightful to hear that people are tapping into our, into our website. That's great news. And I would just love to know how many teachers we are short now, and how many, how many positions we're actually looking for, because that's, that's, that would be critical to this whole conversation, I would think. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
I'm going to change the subject now, go on to something new. I asked for a copy, and I gave everybody a copy of the job description of the director.
Is this something that we need to go into non-public about, because it's, it's a pretty specific job description?
No, it, we really don't, because it isn't specific at all. And I'm going to make a motion on this, because of the fact that this job description, which is public information.
Right, but it's such a specific job that people will know what person we're talking about.
I would agree with you. I, I would make a motion that we go on to non-public if we're going to discuss this at all.
Yeah, let's, let's start off in non-public if it, if it ends up being something that we can speak about. I'm just, I'm worried about it being...
I'm not talking about anybody. I'm just going to talk about the description, one part, a couple of things on the job description.
The, the point is.
Okay, can we?
That everybody knows who.
If I, if I like cringe, can we just quickly go into non-public if I feel like we're going into an area where we're?
Sure. Because many years ago, I guess, the position was from full-time and it went to part-time, 20 hours. And the position, we're paying full-time on a, on a part-time position.
I would be more comfortable with that.
Full year, part-time.
Not true.
We're paying $91,000.
It's not true.
It's not true. It's not true, but it's in the budget for $91,000.
The amount, or the amount, the salary may be correct, but it was increased to a full-time FTE in 2020. I already sent that to you.
But this was never changed on the job description, so...
You're going to make your budget decisions based on expired job descriptions. We're going to be here for another six months.
Dr. McKinney, I'm going to tell you something. I asked for a copy of a job description. This is what I got. So if there's anything upgraded or updated, it should have been given to me.
I emailed it today with a complete...
I didn't go on my email today.
No, he handed it out at the beginning of the...
No.
No, this is what you handed me, Paula.
I emailed it to you along with the updated job description from 2020 that was presented at the time when it was increased to full-time. So if you're going to make the argument, get your facts straight.
Excuse me. Don't get testy with me, because this is what I got the other day, and I didn't see anything else come from you. So this is what I'm going by, but I'm going to make a...
Going by wrong information. That's exactly what I'm pointing out to you. I sent it to you today.
Okay. But why was this sent to me the other day? You know? I'm going to make a motion to make this position part-time again, because I just have questions about this whole job description and what the duties are.
Dr. McKinney?
That's on one thing. I've got other questions on other...
First of all, I'm just taking it back that someone's going to bring a job description without consulting administration, the superintendent, not speak about the performance of the person, and have an overview of what the person does, and make a motion just to reduce a position that seems personal in nature without going through the complete scope of the job. One. Two, during a budget meeting, I don't think this is the task at hand. The task at hand is reviewing the budget. And then, three, if there are concerns around HR, job descriptions, bring it to the HR chairperson and have the HR director review them and have a list of all the job descriptions. But the job description is a basement, not a ceiling, for what the employee does during the course of the day, particularly when it's a direct report of the superintendent.
So I'm going to make a motion to go into non-public.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, no one's on the phone, yay. All those in favor of going into non-public, say aye.
Quick question. If I vote no, will this conversation end?
No. It just means you're outvoted. I mean, you can leave if you want to.
If the majority voted no, would we then suspend this conversation?
No, we would have to tread lightly, and every time I felt like we were getting too close again, I'll make the motion again.
It's going to be discussed either way. It's better that we go into non-public.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
It's that.
So all those in favor of going into, hold on, I have, I can't stand this new paperwork.
No.
No, nobody's on the phone. Non-public session minutes. Oi. Okay, so we would be, jeez Louise. Now I don't have the RSAs in front of me. So we would be, I would make a motion to go into non-public under RSA. Does anybody know them right off the bat? This is an employee under, I believe it's B. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we are now in non-public. Can we pause the recording? And the motion to seal the minutes under RSA, 91A33I, is also a roll call vote. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Giulio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond is not here. Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
And Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop votes yes. Motion to seal passed. And that's for later on. Okay. Sorry that it's so cumbersome. This is the law, which we are doing valiantly. An ignorance of is not an excuse not to do. I've learned that. Okay, so we are back in public. Ms. Johnson, did you want to continue?
I'm going to make a motion to reduce the budget by 10%.
Hold on, I have to write that down.
May I ask a question about that?
Would anybody like to second that for...
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Seconded by Ms. Brown. Put parentheses for discussion.
Shall I state my question?
Hold on.
Being both, you need somebody over to help you.
I was not...
Yep. No, it's hard to do both. My question is, if indeed Mr. Donovan has told us that the mayor is going to propose another, is this going to be that plus that? Or should we wait? Because if we do that now and he does $100,000, it would be $100,000 plus 10%. So to me, that means it would be 100 and XX whatever. I'll leave...
Well, it's already 370 under, so with the 100 that the mayor wants, he's essentially taking half a million dollars away from our budget that he initially said that he could cover. So is it...
Very disappointing.
Is it 10% from what we're proposing, or... Okay.
I hope the voters are listening. Well, I'm not being smart. I have great respect for him, but I have to tell you, I was very disappointed in that. I thought that was handled very poorly. So I thought it was handled very poorly. So I would have a hard time then reducing it, knowing that we're going to be following it with what we're pretty sure the mayor is going to do, and so...
Well, the Board of Alderman still have to vote on it. I mean, just because Mayor Don just says he wants another $100,000, the Board of Alderman can still say, no, we're going to pass this budget. So there's some more hurdles. Ms. Johnson?
And the mayor doesn't have to, he can veto the budget, too. And then it goes back, and you start the process with the Board of Alderman. And the reason I'm doing this, I mean, it might be a little bit easier to reduce it now, so when it gets to the Board of Alderman and the mayor, there's not going to be the reduction with the mayor. It's already been done, and the Board of Alderman can add back at the bottom line of the budget if they wanted to. I'm trying to work it that with the numbers here. I've asked a lot of my questions. Some of these positions have been filled. We've got a lot of open monitor positions here in the budget. And I know that it's not going to pass anyway with my motion to reduce. But I think there's two positions that we need in the budget. And if I asked to please to give me a couple of monitor positions that we haven't filled, I'm sure the board is going to say no to me again, too, because I think we really need to have a grant writer, and I believe we need to have the secretary to get the work done, so we get our minutes. We're separate from administration. We are the board. We are elected. We answer to the public. That's who we answer to. We answer to the students. We answer to the parents. We are the servants of the people of this city. And there's been a lot of talk about elected officials throughout this whole state and the government and the federal government. Who serves who? We serve the people. The people don't serve us. And what I'm trying to do, make it easier. So if somebody wants to read the minutes of the meeting, it's not this piece of paper that says nothing on it, and then they have to go searching for motions to find all the motions. What I'm trying to do is make it easy for members of the public. And some people are not, do not like to get online to read or to listen. And so we have these minutes, and it's easier for us as a board. And I can't even get one thing passed. I could ask to add the money, but I don't want to add. But I'm looking for, I don't even remember how much Jackie was making, but I'm looking for probably around $18,000, $18,000 to $20,000 for a part-time secretary for do our minutes to help find, get the information on the right to know, since Tara has to do this much work, to help us, the board. And I can't get this done for us, the board. So we're not depending on administration to do anything and a grant writer, because I think we could get more grants for this district. Because I had a friend who wrote grants in Massachusetts like crazy, and she got paid off of the grants. And why are we sharing? Why are we sharing something with the mayor? We are autonomous from the rest of the city. We are the Board of Education. We are autonomous. When the mayor came in here and circumvented the process and talked about the teachers' raises, that he was going to find the money, he impeded the process on us. And unfortunately, that night, I couldn't speak up and say, point of order, shut this man down, because I was too sick on the other side of the phone, and every time I hit the button, you couldn't hear anything anyway. You never heard me. And nobody on this board said, point of order to the president. This man shouldn't be speaking of this, because he had no right. He's, we're autonomous from him. And people on this board should realize this. And it's a shame. So that's why I'm asking, I mean, I guess I'll go home crying. I'll take my crying towel, go home. If I can't get two positions, I'll ask for 10%, but I'm trying to now make it easier. So if the mayor gets his way and that $100,000 comes out, we're going to sit around here trying to figure out where we're going to reduce the budget anyway. Thank you.
Mr. Claffey?
Thank you. Why would we want to spend money on a position that we were told does not need to be done? And that is keeping the minutes verbatim. We were told by the State Board Association, no one has to do that. So why would we ever want to spend precious money on that?
Ms. Giulio?
I've actually, you know, one of the things I've been doing since December is I've been writing gratitude letters to all of the schools who come to our meetings and present at the beginning. I volunteered to do that, and I took it over, and I'm actually up to date, except for the junior Razi. I'm going to do that this week. But one of the things I do when I do that, and I find this very easy, is I just go to the YouTube part of the meeting, and I focus on that, and I get all the information I need to personalize the letters so that they feel like we really heard them and we really appreciated them. There are other things I want to bring back up that I think about, and I just scan through. It's really easy to scan through the YouTube versions of the meetings. And if someone's speaking and it's not the topic you're looking for, you just push the bar over a little. I personally prefer that to reading through pages and pages and pages of verbatim minutes. So I'm not even in favor of that position. So that's my view.
So the motion on the floor is to cut the budget by 10%. I have a question for Ms. Johnson. Will you be, if this motion doesn't pass, will you be proposing individual line item cuts? Because I don't, I think a 10% budget cut with a broad brush is too invasive, but I do support the need for a grant writer through the city, or separate from the city, and also the need for a board secretary to do not just the minutes, which I do think, even if they weren't verbatim, they should be far more thorough than they are now. And I think that, I think it actually would be great to have both the option of YouTube scanning through and also the text minutes as well. I think it's easier for both board members to come prepared to meetings who didn't attend to a committee, and also to the, for the public to look back and see some of the reasons that we discussed in committee meetings for why we're bringing things to the full board. That said, and I also think that there are a few items that are kind of public relations, like as far as right to knows, that would be great to have extra staff to help out the folks at Central Office. So my question for Ms., if this motion doesn't pass, will you be proposing individual cuts in other areas to create these positions?
Thank you. I know it's not going to pass. I can look around and see. I know exactly how the vote's going to go. Usually it's the same way every time. I just want to address Ms. Giulio regarding, when you're going back over minutes and you need to get some information, I don't do shorthand, so I have to sit and take every three, four words, write it down, then continue three, four words and write it down, you know? And it's very time-consuming when you have to do that. I had to go back over several meetings to write things down when events happened in these meetings. And so it's a lot easier if you can just go and read it. You know, some people are auditory, some are visual learners, and I think we have to. And probably, I don't know how that will fan out, probably even maybe under ADA, if somebody's hearing impaired and they can't listen to it all the time, they might have to be visual to be able to read these minutes. So I think we have to really be cognizant of the people in this community. You know, so I think that's, you have to take a look at that. I know what the School Board Association says, and that's fine, but every district is different. The needs are different in districts. So to me, I think it's better if we can do it both ways. I mean, we spent so much money on everything else in this district. Perhaps we spent the money prior to this year. And Jackie Waters was with us, she was with us for so many years from when I was on the board, and I have nothing but praise for that woman, because she did excellent minutes. And if you had a question, you called her up, she was able to pinpoint it instantly, even from years back. This woman had a memory. So I don't think there's anything wrong with it. So I don't, the only other place that I would probably look is with some of the monitors out there. I went through this budget. I looked through everything in this budget. I don't want to touch anything with special ed. I'm not looking to hurt anybody. I'm looking to be able to create two positions without adding to a budget. So with that said, I'm going to ask, Ms. Brown, do you have any places that you would like to see reductions in the budget?
Before we continue on, I have Ms. Darling, Mr. Claffey, Claffey, and Ms. Seem.
Have we ever looked into or considered having volunteers transcribe our minutes? The state has the program, the New Hampshire Employment Program, and they do little subprograms like on-the-job training, work experience programs. We could have one of those individuals come in and help do our, transcribing our minutes. It would count as participation hours for them, help give them some job experience, as well as giving us a thing that we don't legally need done but would like done, which is kind of the key to whether it's okay to be a volunteer position, last I checked.
Can I just answer that?
Have an answer?
Well, I don't know whether it's an answer, but when I heard the first arguments, I tried listening to different points of view, and someone pointed out to me, and it became very obvious after it was pointed out. Unfortunately, I didn't get it myself. But if you really need to go back and look infinitely at any of our meetings, they're all recorded. You just go online, and you can ask, as Sharon just said, you can go back and pull it up. And I guess when I look at that job and I say, Mrs. Waters was wonderful, I couldn't agree with you more. But over the years, you start out at $18,000. It doesn't remain $18,000 every job. I mean, we have to have insurance added to that. We have, it becomes quite a bit more than $18,000. I'm not, and I ask myself, with all the needs that we have in this district, and we have many that we can't afford, which I think we all acknowledge that, I hope we do anyway. And so I ask myself, is that a priority over some of these other needs that we have? And I guess I tell myself, for instance, and I agree with you, to find it, you'd have to spend some time, but if it's costing the district even $30,000, let's say, with all the benefits and everything, then is it worth it for one or two of us to have to go back and check to save this $30,000 so that we can have a paraprofessional? To me, those paras are worth their weight in gold. That's just my take on them, but I have to tell you, I really appreciate those people. And so that's how I look at that one. On the grant writer, I'm, you know, I don't know enough about, you know, I think that would depend on who you got, but anyway. So I've answered that, though, so I'll give somebody else their turn.
Mr. Claffey?
Madam President, I move the previous question.
So on the motion to reduce the budget by 10%, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, nay. Wait, what was the question?
All those in favor of reducing the budget by 10%... All those in favor of reducing the budget by 10% say yes.
Could we have what that would amount to from our money, man?
Thank you, Sharon.
Well, when I was going to ask this, I wanted to see if it voted down. But 10% of what? 10% of 121 million or $12 million? Or 10% of the increase of 5.4 million or $540,000? So I mean, you're talking very different numbers. I don't think you mean 12 million. If you mean that, then I would strongly suggest you can't do that.
I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Okay. Withdrawn.
Okay. Out of curiosity, though, have we ever considered getting volunteers in to do things like transcribing our minutes?
Call -- reach out to NHSBA. There are some legalities in, you know, I mean, the paperwork that we do has to match up with what they're writing. So ask them if this is something that's been done. But also, I mean, if you go, and I know we're belaboring this issue, but if you're watching the videos on YouTube, I'm also one of those where I have to, if I read it, I remember it forever. So I click on the closed captioning on YouTube. And then if it's something important, I screenshot it.
The closed captioning also makes it available for people who have hearing problems.
Yes.
But I mean, it is, it's, I think we're, when we're talking about the transcription of our minutes, we're talking about, you know, do we want towels or do we want super deluxe towels? And I think we have the bare minimum of what's needed.
And it's not working for my whole body. So.
Well.
So I would actually, not to be argumentative here, but I think most of us probably read faster than people talk. And so if you can also use the feature, if you have, again, even if they're more elaborate minutes in general, better, more thorough minutes, you can use the find and search feature on a PDF document, which makes it great that you actually, you know, you don't actually have to watch all of the beginning, opening ceremonies of a thing. You can go straight to the finance portion of the meeting, if that's what you're interested in hearing or interested in reading on that feature. I'll tell you, it makes the pre -- and I don't, I think not only for us, but also for the community, I do think it is a huge help for keeping people better educated as opposed to having to go online and sit through this part of the back and forth discussion. You can get to the meat and the bones of things and highlight just, hey, I know somebody said this particular number, this particular sentence, and you can go to it and find it. It's very valuable. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt or cut you off, but that would be my argument for that. And I support the idea, even if we can't get someone, any version of that. But I also think there's a good use at Central Office for a part-time person also to help out with the right-to-know requests, with general communication with the board, coordinating our schedules, all that kind of thing, which I think could be improved.
And that position has been eliminated, right? Or is it sitting there unfilled?
It is. The board secretary is not in this budget.
Okay. So it sounds like we've answered all of the questions, right? The budget questions? So I don't think we need to go into a second meeting, but if somebody wants to make a motion on -- Ms. Brown?
I actually would like to make a motion to increase the -- I actually want to make two separate motions. I want to increase the budget by up in the amount of $26,000 for the hiring of a board secretary.
By what? Increase the budget by what?
$26,000 for a board secretary. They don't have to be hired at that -- sorry, if somebody gets a second.
For a board secretary?
I'll second for discussion purposes.
And I only put in its $26,000. Hopefully, we would post it as something less than that or even part-time based on hours and an hourly wage scale. But I just wanted to leave a little room for wiggling. May I edit my motion not to exceed $26,000?
So increase the budget for a board secretary not to exceed?
I think you just picked 26. Not to exceed is, you know, the budget is a number. It's not a range of numbers. So just say 26.
Okay. So Ms. Brown made that motion, Ms. Johnson seconded. Do we have any discussion on it? Mr. Claffey?
Could we have a job description of this position?
I absolutely think we should. And do you want me to write it right now?
Well, I was wondering if one of the duties would include writing, transcribing minutes or meetings?
Yes, I think the duties would include transcribing minutes, helping with right-to-know requests, scheduling board actions, meetings, and, you know, keeping those things up to date.
Ms. Darling?
I think if there's even a chance of us being able to partner with one of the state programs to help give a job opportunity or at least experience to an adult trying to break into the workforce, I think we really should look into that over spending the extra money. But I do like where you're going with this.
I think so. Well, and here, I will, just to mention that, I agree with you. That would be an excellent first step. But if we put it in the budget right now and choose to go the route of volunteering as well, we'll at least have the money earmarked for it. And like I said, I hope it's less money. I hope.
Mr. Claffey and then Ms. Johnson?
Just given the fact that Ms. Johnson withdrew her amendment after some discussion of what I thought, I guess this is a separate issue. I move the previous question.
Ms. Johnson's 10%?
This amount.
Oh. Ms. Brown's motion?
Yes.
Okay, so on the motion to, sorry, I know. Motion to increase the budget by $26,000 for a board secretary.
Have to vote to move the question, don't we?
Yes, sorry. Thank you.
Yes, you do.
Isn't Jimmy? He's up here.
I think he has Robert Truitt afforded with him. Maybe he could be our parliamentarian.
When we watch the recordings, can we hear him laugh?
So do we have a second for Mr. Claffey's motion?
So we all just randomly crack up. Yeah, and they don't know.
Yes, it's the weirdest thing when you watch it. We all just like, there's an invisible person. We all just typically, I just start laughing. It's just like, do we have a second for Mr. Claffey's motion to move the question?
I'll second it.
Okay. On the motion to move the previous question, all those in favor say aye?
Could you clarify what that is? I'm a little, at this point, I'm getting tired. And if we move, what are we doing? Translate it for me. Pretend I.
So they're done with the discussion on Ms. Brown's motion and just want to vote on it? So we're voting on voting?
We're voting on not voting on her?
No, we're voting on voting.
Or just vote, if you want to move it and vote on it, just vote yes.
Oh, we're just, we're going to end the discussion. That's all I would, that's all it means if I say yes. Okay, thank you.
All those in favor on the motion to move the question, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes eight to zero.
Mine is no.
Sorry.
Seven to one.
Seven to one. Jeez Louise, guys. Okay, so motion still passes. Motion to increase the budget by $26,000 for a board secretary, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That's two. All those opposed?
Nay.
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 That was everybody else? That's five, so motion fails. All right, so.
I think she has a motion.
Passes, hold on. And that was eight oh one, eight oh two. Ms. Brown?
I move that we increase the athletic department budget by $36,000 to be earmarked for B teams and unified sports at the middle school to be used at the athletic discretion.
Motion to increase the athletic budget.
The athletic department budget by $36,000 to be earmarked for B teams at the middle schools and unified sports.
At the middle schools and unified sports. Is that enough money to, I know that's probably?
So I will say, there will probably be, this, those were two of the three top items that Lisa had requested.
Right. I figured you had it right in front of you.
Yeah, requested as a priority for future planning. And unified sports, specifically, they piloted the unified basketball program at, I think, all three middle schools, but I know definitely at Elm Street the year before the pandemic. It's a way for students with special needs to work with other students, one-on-one, more typical learning students, to support each other on the athletic field. And I think it's just really great. They had a great success with it the first year of the program, and I think it'd be great to continue through the district. The other thing we're having as we both right now, Elm Street in particular is a Division One school because of the number of students. As we start the new middle schools.
But not for field hockey.
What's that?
Not for field hockey.
Oh, well, that's true because it's a citywide sport, which also means that we cannot compete with other schools in our own division typically. Fairgrounds and Penachuck are currently, I think, Division Two, but I might be wrong about that. And because it's all based on the number of students that go to your school. As we transfer into the new middle school, which will be shortly, our, we're all going to be transferring into the Division One bracket. Because my children, and this is, you know, it's a kind of a personal thing, but it won't actually affect my kids, it'll affect the kids later than mine. I've observed the program building difference that happens when, and through every single sport across the board, when you have B teams available at middle schools. And not just from a development perspective of the athleticism of students, but also from an emotional perspective from making cuts. And I think we've seen a downturn, especially at some of the bigger schools in the last few years in participation, because a lot of times first, not so much for things like cross-country and track, which are, include all kinds of participation, but basketball, soccer, basketball is a good example because there's only five players on a court at the same at a time. Even if you have a second string and a full bench, and that's maximum of 15 players. If you have 60 kids go out for your basketball team and 40 of them are sixth graders, they're probably not going to make it. And it's very unlikely that they're going to come back and try out again next year. And for a kid to come back and do that, it shows a great deal of resiliency, and I respect it very much. But we end up really struggling in both our program building and I think we block a lot of children, students, out of sports long-term because of it, because they never return, come back. I think from an emotional perspective, moving forward, you know, we're talking about keeping class, small class sizes. We're talking about keeping our community more involved. The physical fitness aspect, I think B teams at the middle school and unified basketball, just more from a more inclusive aspect, would be really great for our community as a whole. So that's my pitch.
So I'll second that. Could you guys speak to that?
Your thoughts?
I met with Ms. Gingras, I think after her budget presentation. So we're working next year to expand high school intermurals and unified sports. Biggest challenge at the middle school level is really two things, field and gym space and hiring more people. So her plan was to give it a go this year, starting at the high school level. Going into next year, we could work it out in between the off-seasons and expand some opportunities for kids. I completely agree, we need more opportunities for kids. But she needs a little more time to kind of coordinate that because it's a challenging kind of space right now, the way the middle schools are constructed, getting kids from Elm to other places and a gym and field space. So that was our one-two punch.
Parking at Elm Street.
I don't hate the parking, sorry. We are funding that with ESAR funds right now. So if the board was willing to come back in a year's time and see how this is working and then maybe add to that activity and have more funding to bring it to the middle school level, because, you know, she certainly agrees. And she pointed out, there are groups of kids that are just missing out. And it's a weird age for kids. It's great to keep them busy, my dad always said. But there's more logistics involved than just the funding piece.
Mr. Claffey?
Thank you. If my math is correct, the athletic department, athletics is getting about a 4.2% increase this year. Looking at the curriculum proposed budget, they're asking for $39,900 related to education. That's for K through 12, curriculum related to education, almost the same amount. So I just see it's a zero-sum game, and I certainly would support that if alternative funding was available.
That, the only thing, that's a good point you made in the operating budget, but keep in mind with the ESAR funds, we're funding many different curriculum things. We're not, we're not spending any of ESAR on athletics. So that's a.
But this amendment would come from the operation budget.
This would be an increase in the operating budget, yes. And the $36,000, I mean, looking at, for the B-team piece, I think Lisa said about $53,000 to $54,000. And she said if it came in less, she would prioritize which programs. So if you want to do this, I think you can say, if you want to do it for B teams, you could say, "We're going to do it for B teams." And then you're going to basically leave it up to Lisa to decide which one she's going to do, because that's really going to be her job. We can say, "Do it," but she's going to actually do it.
Absolutely.
And the only thing I'm nervous about is what they were talking about with the space. And I think that they were really willing to look, not willing, but looking at really expanding this program once we opened up the new middle school. Because then we're not looking at busing kids out to other fields. While I completely support this, I think this is something that may be better off waiting till the next middle school opens and then we don't have to, because I'd hate to do it for Penachuck and Fairgrounds and then not be able to do it because we can't do all the transportation for Elm Street.
Can I, Ms. Lamphier, back?
Oh, again, my eyes, not an owl.
I was just wondering.
Or a mule. I learned that's 360 degree.
I just wanted to make sure, this is $36,000 in addition to the increase already? And I also was wondering if that, you know, would include funding for the busing and include funding for like uniforms, coaching and stuff like that that would be necessary? I mean, or would that be necessary?
Well, that's, that would be included in the 36. So therefore, if you wanted, you know, six B teams, $36,000 might get you three of them, something like that.
Thank you.
You'd need all those things to have that.
I mean, I'd be happy to expand it more. I was just kind of lowballing to, because that was actually the number that Lisa gave in last year's budget. That's kind of what I was, when, because I asked the same question a whole year ago. And I'd be happy to increase the amount to more closer to 50 if, but I don't know if that's going to pass. But I, my thought was that I don't even know if all, you'd have enough kids to participate in all things for B teams. It's probably unlikely because we've seen a dwindling number in all those sports. It's more likely that you probably have B teams in basketball, maybe soccer, maybe, maybe at some of the schools, but not all the schools, because also you're talking about getting those participation numbers starting. Sorry, go ahead.
So when, when Mr. Donovan said like three B teams, would that be three B teams in each middle school? Would it be one B team for each middle school? And would Elm Street be included?
The way I read what Lisa put is she has a price for each of the sports, like boys' soccer, girls' soccer, boys' basketball, girls' basketball. So there's a price associated with this, each. So I'm assuming it's one at each of the three middle schools. So the $53,000 would be five sports at three middle schools.
Ms. Gilio?
I just have a really, well, maybe a silly question, but I'm not, my idea of athleticism is bowling. And that's all that I did throughout high school and college. So I just want to know, is there a difference between a B team and a junior varsity team?
It's kind of the same thing, but for middle school.
Okay. Because B team sounds. Okay, because B team sounds sort of, well, you're not the A team, you're the B team. And they might be more attracted to it if they were called junior.
Or practice teams, yeah.
Yeah, or something, you know, something that was a little like, no, I'm not, you're not a.
Yeah, I think there's sort of category dropdown right now. Ms. Brown? And then somebody over here had something? No? Okay.
So just to your, to your comment, Ms. Bishop, I agree with you that the transition point would kind of make more sense when we expanded the new middle school, but we've got two and a half years' worth of kids that would not be able to benefit between now and then. The secondary part of that program problem is, right now, you know, is a pretty substantial increase in a budget. I think that we're going to be in a situation two years from now, when that, those, that school opens their doors, that we're just going to be scraping by. I do not think we're going to have the kind of flexibility we have right now. ESAR funds are being done. This is the highest increase we've seen in a long time. Lisa's had this on her list, I shouldn't say Lisa, but Ms. Jingeris has had it, her, this on her list for like years.
Yeah.
And it's never gotten this much, this is the most discussion this has ever gotten. So I think, I think that's why this is right now, to have the time to at least get it in the budget. If for some reason it turns out that either one, I'm completely off, and they don't get enough student participation to run the sports, or if there just isn't a feasibility of flex space, or maybe the B teams only get to practice Tuesday, Thursdays, instead of five days a week, I think it still is worth it to get kids that kind of opportunity. Thank you.
Mr. Claffey?
Well, if, Ms. Brown? Are you, you still offering the amendment? Is the amendment still on, on the floor?
Oh, I, would you like, would you like me to offer? Sure.
Is it on, is it, is it on?
It's already on, we're discussing the motion, she's already made.
But you still?
I, I haven't amended the amount.
She hasn't withdrawn it yet.
Do you want to amend the amount?
No.
I think it's going to call the question.
I mean, you're doubling, you're doubling, this would double their increase, and nobody, I mean, I went to a baseball game Monday, I love sports, but I just think, how do you tell the other departments, we've doubled athletics? So I guess I would say.
Hey, I'll raise it, let's, a double curriculum too. Come on, let's get this done.
Elm Street uniforms, I'm all for that. So I guess I would move the question. If it's still on the floor.
Well, if we're done with, with the discussion on it, we can just vote and then avoid one vote. Is there any further discussion?
Were you, you already moved the question, so you can't have any discussion?
I, I asked.
Because I'd like to ask a couple of questions on it.
Okay, then we do have to vote on the motion to move the question. Hold on, I have to write it down. Do I have a second? Do I have a second on Mr. Claffey's motion to move the question? There not being a second, we just continue on with the discussion. Okay, sorry. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Now let me get this. So would Elm Street be part of this, or Elm Street would be left out because in this proposal?
No, they'd be, they'd be part of it.
They'd be part of it.
Any B team, knowing Lisa, if you were going to, let's say, do girls' basketball, she would add one at each school, assuming there were enough players that wanted to play.
And ESAR funds can't cover any of this.
ESAR funds cannot cover athletics, no.
We can't wiggle it into like the social, emotional, maturity, team player, listening.
But I'm not writing that, yes.
Okay, here's my question. Is there any place with the ESAR funds that we could move something out of this budget with the, and move it into ESAR funds and move this money into the B teams? The $36,000.
Can you say that one more time?
Okay. I know in the budget, is there anything in the budget for $36,000 that we can move into ESAR funds and use, and take that money and put it into the B team for the athletics for $36,000?
If we can cut stuff, we're already cutting stuff.
On TV. That would be my concern.
I mean, this is, I'm looking at ways to get the money. I can't, I want the kids to have the sports, but I can't raise the budget anymore. I mean, I think it's great for the kids, I want the kids, maybe next year's budget, but we had the big increases with the salaries this year that we have to account for, we have to pay wages here. I mean, your teachers aren't going to come in or anybody else and work for nothing, so.
Madam President, my recommendation would be for me to go back, get a recommendation from Lisa, and double-check around the ESAR funding, and then you could make a decision that way. I do believe there is flexibility in there regarding funding stipends and other after-school activities and intermurals for kids. So I, I would like to look into that further.
Okay, so I guess my question is that if that, we're going to look into that further, then we can't vote on the budget tonight.
Oh, jeez, you guys promised.
I didn't promise anything. I don't make promises.
Was it tacit?
You know, you don't want this promises made, promises broken thing.
All the dice, I have faith that Dr. McKinney is going to find that ESAR funding.
But, I mean, but then you're voting on a budget here with the way everything's placed in each line item versus if you're going to have to make a move on something. Because I'd like to see where it comes from and where it's, you know, I think that's only fair for the public to see that we're going to take it from this line item and move it there and, you know.
Mr. Claffey? Sorry?
I was just, doesn't Ms. Jingeris determine where the money goes within her budget?
Yeah, but if we say it like specifically.
Can we legally commit her to spend this money if we've already kind of given her a green light, a blank check, and said, here's, I'm sure there are some exceptions.
Update the mascot uniform?
The board can say, I want to add B basketball teams at each middle school. The board can say that, and Lisa will be more than happy to go ahead and do it. So, yes, it's not like Lisa gets a chunk of $2 million and spends it any way she wants. Her, her spending's fairly clearly defined anyway.
And just one other, she's already told us she can't buy, she won't buy Elm Street uniforms because we don't know the colors and the names, so how can we get the B-team uniforms?
I agree, that's a very sad thing, and, you know, I, I would be willing to volunteer my parent support for rallying the troops to do the iron-on uniforms, and we'll be a little, not classy, but we'll make it happen.
Jessica and her cricket are going to be busy this summer.
We're going to be super busy, but, you know.
I would like to join the Pinterest moms in making the uniforms.
Can you be the Elm Street soaring seamstresses?
You can do fundraising.
And we have that embroidered onto our shirts.
So that would be the other thing. I mean, I'd be happy to work, if we can make this happen and get the program started.
How about a GoFundMe page?
No, not for the schools.
We can't, we can't do it?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think that there are fundraising opportunities that could be done to supplement this once we get the program off the ground, or once we get things moving. But I, I do mean, I completely understand Ms. Johnson's point that, you know, is it fair to taxpayers to raise it anymore? I understand.
Like I said, if they can find the money, move it from one place to the other, and have an ESAR fund move into, use whatever I said, that's fine. But I don't think we can vote on the budget tonight if we know that there's going to be some type of a change in a line item somewhere.
I think this is certainly something for, for next budget, is say this is a priority of ours. I mean, we're all going to be here next year, and if Lisa and administration know that this is something that we really want to push forward, that's, I mean, that's, they can show us that for next year.
The motion's on the floor, we need to move the motion. We need to vote on it.
We've already done that, and nobody seconded it.
But I'm saying, let's vote.
So you're moving the question?
No, 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 let's just vote, let's just vote, let's just vote. Stop, stop with the extra writing for me. Okay. And I just, and I think we're all leaning towards the same thing, as we are all in complete support of this, but I am not going to pass it just because I don't think logistically it's the time to, but it needs to be a priority for once we get the next middle school up and going. So that's my piece. So on the motion to increase the athletic budget, $36,000 for B teams at middle schools and unified sports, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
How many was that? One, two, three? Three. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. One, two, three. Ms. Darling, what did you vote?
I voted no.
Okay. That's okay.
I'm really voting like next year.
But this is, I mean, this, that's a split vote. I think we've all been in support of this, and I think one of the things Lisa said was organizing transportation. Elm Street's basketball tends to be at night. It's a bit more difficult to get kids to and from. Okay, so without, if we have no further discussion on the budget, because Ms. Brown said she had the two things, Ms. Johnson said that she had her list that she completed, I would be looking for a motion to approve this budget and send it off to the Board of Aldermen.
So moved.
Ms. Seem?
I would just make the budget, for the amount.
Yeah. Yes.
To approve the budget of $121,864,804.
So, hold on. Motion to approve school budget for, is it 2022, 2023? For 2022, 2023, in the amount of? As presented. And that is the correct motion, Ms. Seem and Ms. Gilio, that you are primary and secondary? What the? Okay. So on the motion to approve the school budget for 2022, 2023, in the amount of $121,864,804 as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Was that two? Okay. So six to two, motion passes. Okay, so now, hold on. We are going to make a motion to adjourn, hold on.
Ms. Johnson, stop being so aggressive.
When we were in the Grand Canyon, we did horse rides on the rim, and I had to keep holding the, the thing back, and this is how I feel right now, like, whoa. Not yet. So after we motion to adjourn, we have a quick non-meeting to discuss council information. It should take five minutes. But I just need the motion to adjourn first. So on the motion to adjourn.
Are we sure that it should be a non-meeting, or should it be a non-public, so we should just go into non-public right now, I think?
I am giving you updates from council. You want it to be a non-public?
They voted adjourn.
Just have to go to these papers that I have to do. Okay. So, jeez Louise. Okay, so, hold on, guys. Non-public template, here we go. Okay. So first, what we have to do is we have to vote to go into a non-public under the RSA that is appropriate.
Madam President, I'm sorry, I thought there was a motion to adjourn.
Nobody, nobody made it yet.
Well, you didn't let, you told us to wait.
I didn't, I was, I was.
If, if someone had been allowed to make that, could we vote on that and then go to non-meeting?
So what Jessica wants is she wants this to be a non-public meeting, which means it has to occur within the boundaries of our meeting. If we adjourn the meeting, then we can't then go into a non-public.
Well, that's, but we didn't get a chance to even do that because you told us to wait.
But Ms. John, Ms. Brown said that she didn't want to adjourn the meeting. She said, hold on, I don't want to adjourn.
She can vote no on the motion, that wasn't allowed to be presented.
But I.
I think we're taking longer right now arguing about how to do this than we would if we just voted and went in.
You need your mic on.
I feel like we are taking more time having this discussion than we would be if we just voted and went in, like, let's do this.
Voted and went in, but he, what he wants to do is call the vote to adjourn.
Let's just make it non-public, just.
But we can't go into non-public once we adjourn the meeting.
So let's not adjourn the meeting.
But Mr. Claffey wants to adjourn the meeting. Can we just listen to me? Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to go into non-public.
I second.
Okay? All right. We made this motion at 8:33. Nope, that's 8:29. And it will be under RSA B, under RSA A32B. And we have to do this by roll-call vote. So on the vote to go into non-public, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
No.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond is not here. Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop votes yes. We are entering non-public at 8:30.